11:00 AM. I would like to start with the blessing and land acknowledgement. Counselor Martin, please.
As we gather, we recognize we're on treaty free lands which are steeped in rich indigenous history and home to many First Nations and Métis people today. We continue to be thankful for the partnerships with indigenous people. We give thanks for the many blessings we enjoy in the city of Canora. We seek wisdom in our minds, clearness in our thinking, truth in our speaking, and always love in our hearts, so that we may try always to unite the citizens of Canora. Let these principles guide us in our decision making today.
Thank you, Counsel. Can I just remind everybody, please turn off your cellphones? Just when people are speaking, it's a distraction, so. Moving on the agenda, item number C, public information notices, not applicable. Item D, declaration of pecuniary interest in the nature thereof. If there's any member of council that has any declaration of pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof pertaining to any items as follows on today's agenda, or from a meeting at which a member was not in attendance, seeing none, okay. Okay, moving on the agenda, item number one, so just want to let everybody know, we understand this was put together very quickly, and normally there's a process where we have people submit deputation forms, so everybody knows what those are. We're gonna do something a little unorthodox today. We're gonna allow people the opportunity to speak, but council at some point, because the nature of our discussions, will have to move into camera, which means that everybody will have to vacate the council chamber, because you're not allowed to be here when we're having this discussion. We are going to provide this opportunity for people to speak. And just reminding people to be respectful of the people that are speaking. You may not agree with them, let them have their voice. This is what this meeting's about, this is what we're looking for, is solutions to the problems we have in the community. We have one deputation, and it's five minutes, and council does not ask questions at the end. We are going to record everything, we're going to have all do that way. I want to thank everybody for coming out on very short notice. We have a lot of problems here, we need to start coming up with solutions, whether it's short term, medium term, long term. This is the start of the journey. This is the start of where we're gonna try and go as a community. So, again, respect people that speak, because I'm not gonna put up with a whole bunch of nattering in the audience. That's the worst thing for this to work, for everybody. So, first of all, I'd like to call on, we did receive one formal deputation, so I'm gonna allow her to speak first, Dr. Marcia Little, please.
When people do speak, they'll come to the podium and speak from the podium. Would you like to order, please?
Yes.
I'd also ask after Marcia, do people introduce themselves if you're here on behalf of themselves?
Oh.
At work, business, or an organization?
Yeah, so I was gonna, as they get up, they need to state their name, like where their, like your address, it's all in the deputation, so thank you.
I have a question, how will the order of speaking be? You know, if there's a lot of people that want to speak, how are you gonna choose?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna start at the front and work my way, there's no particular order, I'm just gonna do it that way, so. As I say, it's, this is a very informal process, which we normally don't engage in, but we'll allow people the opportunity to speak. So, the floor's yours, Dr.
Hi, my name is Dr. Marcia Little. I've owned a dental practice on Matheson Street South for 11 years. I'm seeing an increase in concern for the safety of my staff and patients due to increasing incidences of crime and alcohol and drug abuse around my practice and downtown Canora. We've had tires slashed, vehicles broken in two, our parking lot is used as a needle dumping ground, and as a bathroom. Recently, our window was broken. We had a man threaten to kill one of our receptionists. Fortunately, she locked the door before he could enter. This was after a few days of him loitering around our building and around downtown Canora. On numerous occasions, we have drug and alcohol induced people sitting and sleeping in our vestibules. On numerous occasions, we have belligerent people entering our office and threatening and scaring our staff and patients. They ask to use the bathroom, it's extremely difficult getting them to leave, they make a mess of the bathroom, and are extremely disruptive to our business. In closing, I empathize with the disease of drug and alcohol addiction, however, in these challenging times of business and staffing, we need to figure out solutions to keep our businesses safe and open. Thank you for your time and consideration in this matter.
Thank you, Dr.
Thanks.
Okay, who's up, who's up next? Okay, so if you can, please state your name, like when you get up to the podium, state your name so it's on record, your address, and a contact number, telephone number, just in case we have to get ahold of you. Do you need email?
That's fine.
Nope, just a telephone number's fine.
My name is Rae Bath, phone number 468-7913. My husband and I own Tilly's Pharmasave. Just two things I wanted to say. Locking doors can't be an option for all businesses, there has to be another discussion for a solution. And the only other thing I want to say is, we've had to ban people from our stores, but there's no way that we can enforce that banning and enforce the, and make a change for that. So those are the two, only two things I wanted to add.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, go ahead.
My name is Mary Alice Smith, my phone number is 807-631-8414. I'm the Chair of Canora Moving Forward, a community coalition that was formed here two years ago to address issues around homelessness and the underlying issues around homelessness of mental health addictions, poverty, and racism. So there's a few points. The safety, in the midst of what's been happening in the last week, one of our biggest concerns has been the safety of people in the street community. We've been reading posts about vigilanteism, and people are gonna, you know, take things into their own hands, about driving people out to the edge of the city and dropping them off, and it's very unnerving for those of us who care about the, we think maybe 150 people, homeless people in Canora. Also, that everyone is being, of this community, like every community, including Canora, we're a very diverse community, and everyone who is in the street community is being painted with the same brush. The messages are very skewed about who's out there and why people are out there. Our experience is that most people do not behave in the way that some of the businesses have experienced, and we, our hearts really go out to people who have experienced these things, and we want to be part of the solutions. We're concerned about people linking a bunch of incidents together and creating a crisis and not looking at both sides of what's happening. And there are many factors affecting, not everyone in the homeless community has addictions or mental health issues, some do. Niche has had a space open, so one of the things we do is we operate what we call a safe space, which between the hours of 4:00 and 9:00 PM, when the fellowship center closes and the shelter opens, people can have a space where they can come and visit, they have supper. Niche has been providing that space for the last month or so, as well as we've been moving around, because we haven't been successful in finding a permanent space. And Niche reports having no issues having served the community for these few months. We think there is a crisis in the community, it is around housing and mental health support, mental health and addiction support. There is an alarming lack of support, so when, for example, a business owner experiences something like this, we understood that at one point, the OPP and other community services were going to provide a mental health crisis response unit that could be out there and respond to things when they happen, and maybe help people figure out better, you know, better ways to respond when something happens. We'd like to find out more about that. We also believe that racism is a key part of what's happening here, even though people are very careful, want to say this, we hear that we, the message becomes very clear, and our, the homeless community is probably 75 to 80% Anishnabi or Métis people. And this has been a longstanding issue in Canora, people talk about, you know, making Canora great again, and our question is, great for who? It was never great here for indigenous people, ever, and I can tell you story after story in my family of the kinds of racism that people experienced. When I first visited here in 1970, with a group from the Indian Friendship Center in Thunder Bay, as a teenager, we could not go into restaurants here in the early 1970s still. So it was not great, it's never been great for a lot of people. And so this fuels these interactions, and, you know, we're never going back there. We're not going back to that, Canora, none of us. We also want to say, we are part of the solution, we have resources, we have very committed people, we are very dedicated to working with others in the community. And so if there's anything we can do, we recently got a grad from the Anti-Racism Director to do some community education work in here, here in Canora in the coming year, so we hope that people will think about that and respond and make use of those resources. And we also want, another option is for the city to declare a housing and mental health emergency, because there is one, and then find ways to address that. Thank you. You're welcome.
Perfect timing. Next, Andy?
Andy Scobialo, I'm the current President of Chamber of Commerce, telephone number's 407-1268. I first want to thank our new Mayor, Andrew Poirier, and our new councilors, and moving things forward. I've seen a change already, I've met with Graham the other day. We are a community in crisis right now, and I get that from talking to our business people and residents. As the Chamber, we've had a safety program in the community for over four years right now, and it didn't go very far. We didn't set direction, there was issues with it, we had members dropping out, we didn't take it seriously. And speaking to the councilors, Graham specifically, I know the city is looking at doing something, and I know they have to, because when we hear of all the incidents, and when I get them through the Chamber, seem very powerless. And I've got new people coming into Canora willing to help us. You know, I talked to Bob Burney the other night at a Harbor Town Biz, the want and the heart has to be there from everybody, business owners, community, and our city council and mayor. We've got to be dedicated to looking for a solution. Is there one today? No. Working on it six months from now, we've got to set goals of where we want to go, or you're not going anywhere, and you've got to find out why you didn't set those, didn't make those goals, for whatever reason, maybe as participants, people from the community, that's where we're gonna find the answers. From our business group, they're stunned right now, I'm gonna tell you that right now, talking to them, being downtown, we've never seen this level to this point, ever, in Canora. And we can go back decades, decades, whatever, I mean, when the police do a survey and find out where 70 to 80% of the people feel unsafe, and that's residents, seniors, working people, now the few businesses, now the people don't want to come to work, or a few have closed up. So I'm hoping we can work together, and in fact, we have to. It's not a want, it's a need, that the community come together with open forums, speaking honestly, and that's when I sat with Graham the other day, it's got to be truth and honesty of, and you may not like the answer, you know what, you may not like what you hear, but you've got to sit down and really evaluate what people have to think and say. So on behalf of the Chamber, I know we've got a lot of background information, I started something a month ago that really want to take hold, and it's not that we want the identification of doing it, it's the fact it has to get done, or we're in worse times ahead. So I think we're gonna take the time, work together, and you may not be, you may be at odds on a few things, and that's okay, because you're gonna hear a lot of negative before you get to the positive of how to change those, but the answers are gonna be in there. Out of 100 questions or 100 answers, 90 you may work with after all. So, thank you for the time, and you know what, on short notice, phenomenal, because I think the people that care are here when I look in the audience. The next one should be three times as big, and three times the answer, given the time to talk. So thank you for the opportunity, congratulations on a year that's gonna be full of turmoil probably, and that's okay, because you've got the right people in, and you'll deal with the turmoil, and have a better ending to it. And we're here to help with the Chamber, so thank you.
Thank you, Andy. Come on, you are, you gotta talk. So, excuse me, we're gonna, we're gonna pass a sheet around, and if people want to just, it's probably easier to just put their name, what else would you like on there?
Yeah, just if anybody wants to be, continue to be part of discussions moving forward, you want to sign this sheet with your name and your phone number and your email.
Hi, my name is Washington Maigum. My English name is Craig LaHond, I'm from, from Washington Maigum, a local community, also known as Rathvortage. I've come here to, you know, just to speak on my own behalf. I was on these streets, you know, I grew up on these streets, just three years ago, I was committing crimes and running around just like, you know, everyone else, and, you know, it hurts me to see how much people are getting violent with these vulnerable people, with these people that are, that are hurting and sad, and, you know, they have addictions, they have so much trauma, and it hurts me to see people, you know, have that mentality towards them instead of trying to heal people, you know, because three years ago, I was up, it's possible to change, so, you know, it's really hard for me to see that, well, I'm still healing, and I'm, you know, I'm still, you know, taking time, but it really does hurt me to see the community, you know, just talk like that, it just, it sets us back 100 years, like, you know, this town is built on junk and violence. You have plaques downtown that talk about the street walls that you guys have between police forces, like, how do we, like, close the liquor stores, stop giving out prescription drugs, like, open up treatment centers, open up more beds, these people need homes. You know, that's, that's how I started to put myself back together, I had a home, I had people that I could talk to, people that, you know, a community that I could, you know, that would accept me, and that wasn't here, I had to go back to Winnipeg, I had to go other places to get, and then I got here, you know, just to help my community, but it hurts me, really, really hurts me to see people going back 100 years and have that pitchfork mentality, you know, we need to come together and come up with solutions, just like we are, but, you know, we can't set ourselves back, we need to move forward. You know, a lot more people are gonna be hurt physically, and people are gonna arm themselves, and it's just not the way to go with things, you know, we need to, we really do need to come up with solutions, and action is needed, and, you know, I said this two years ago, you know, we need to do things now, and these people suffer, open up some doors to use.
Thank you. Go ahead, ma'am.
Somewhere around here, I exist under here. My name is Mary Bowden. My phone number is 464-0990. I'm a member of St. Albans Anglican Cathedral Parish. I'm a member of Canora Moving Forward. I'm probably a member of a lot of irrelevant organizations. So, at St. Albans, we do a couple of things in the community, probably more than a couple, but two that I can think of. One is, we run a business called Twice as Nice at the corner of Matheson and Second Street, used clothing store. We've been there, I'm not sure, five years or so, and we serve a lot of people in the homeless community. We've had a gift card program where cards were given out by social agencies, and people could come in and shop, like in a regular store, and pay with their gift card, which was no money, there's no money involved in the gift card, nobody purchased it. We've had an alarm system in our store for almost as long as we've been a store, so that if there's a challenge, difficulty, a person at the cash desk can push a button, and volunteers who are doing laundry in the back can come out and just be there in numbers, which until recently has been successful. There has been a change in the last two years, we now have two paid staff, which really significantly affects our bottom line, and there's definitely been a change in a lot of the clientele, but not all of it. The other thing that St. Albans does is, part of Canora Moving Forward, providing food, we provide Friday night supper, and since Canora Moving Forward has no place to have a central location, people have been coming into St. Albans Dining Hall every Friday since the middle of October when it started to get cold, and we provide a meal, and they can stay on cold nights as late as 8:00, which is half an hour before the shelter opens for those people that use the shelter. We have had no problems at all, we had one challenge early in November, one challenging individual clearly had some mental health issues, was handled easily by our volunteers, two of whom come from Canora Moving Forward, two of whom come from the Vale residency program, so people see people there who look like them, not people like me, old white people with white hair, who, you know, have good intentions, but don't look the part. So, as Mary Alice said previously, painting everybody with one brush does not work, because we have people that come in for a meal, they are polite, they are appreciative, our volunteers, the regular volunteers who've been preparing meals now for two years, have commented on how everybody is getting along, and how appreciative this population is. So, it's not one great big monolith, there's individuals, and clearly people who need a great deal of help. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Mary. Anybody else? Peter?
I'm gonna start by saying, I and Doug Orchard, who's behind me, we helped out when Canora Moving Forward was running warming spaces, places to eat at the Presbyterian Church and the First Baptist, and also on the waterfront, and we have experienced some bad behavior, but mostly good. But I want to ask, is anyone here representing Canora Chute Advisory? Is anyone here representing Morning Star Detox? Is anyone here representing Wynn Hack? I'm sorry, I can't pronounce the indigenous name. Is anyone here from Wynn Hack? All Nations Health Partners, Northwestern Health Unit. See, the city needs those brains and those bodies and their money at the table, because I know from my experience with Canora Moving Forward, I was very disappointed by the helping agencies, so-called helping agencies, and I don't mean anything particularly negative by that, not showing up at the table, not volunteering at the warming spaces, even though their clients were there and needed help. But one thing I want to suggest is, as a practical option, no one has a solution, no one has one right answer, we have to do some experimentation. You've got the Thistle Pavilion with washrooms, open it 24/7, have a foot patrol 24/7, open the washrooms at Thistle, do that for the winter as an experiment, that's one thing you could do to relieve some of the anxiety about people pooping in backyards and alleyways, about people misbehaving, because people need a space just to rest, to calm down, to grab a coffee, to get some support, maybe be referred to another agency for some help. But that would be one thing council could think about, to do something now, rather than wait for a multitude of meetings consulting with the public, all of which is good. And Jeff Duggan knows about this idea, because it was proposed some time ago, but anyway, I'm just throwing it out there as something you can think about. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Yes, go ahead, ma'am.
I too would like to thank Mayor and Council for calling this meeting, I think it's very relevant. My name is Denise Forsythe, I'm Senior Director at Lakewood Woods District Hospital for Mental Health and Addictions. I want to build on some of the comments that were made by many of the participants already. We do have an All Nations Health Partners Mental Health and Addictions Working Group, and the priority population is mental health and addictions for this, for this group. There's been many initiatives, but clearly there's more work that needs to be done. We work very closely alongside one another, but we have to work together as a community. Peter, you mentioned some really good points, we have, we don't have enough representation here of all the people, have some of the power and have some of the resources to contribute to the solution. One of the major challenges we have had over the course of the last little while is staffing. I mean, we all feel it, we're in a national nursing crisis, Morning Star is one of the addictions programs that fall under my umbrella. We are funded for nursing and for nurse practitioners, we have been the last two years trying to recruit. We also have mobile outreach RAM that works alongside many partners, KCA, Wynn Hack, CMHA, Canora, who are all, and Northwestern Health Unit, who are all critical partners in providing some level, a level of addictions treatment and peer support, too. There are also other initiatives that exist out there, we have a food security subcommittee that works with KCA, MACWAP Patrol specifically, and other partners to ensure that food and basic needs are provided to our vulnerable population to help decrease with stigma and to make sure that their basic needs are met in community. Peter talked about access to washrooms, that's huge. People can, we, so we're hoping to start a new program come this winter, we just got some funding to have a place where people can wash their clothes, learn about infectious disease, get clean, have a shower, because that's been identified historically that people don't have that opportunity. We also have a very significant transient community, we have people that may get released from custody, may not have transportation home, and so that contributes to our vulnerable population, for people being displaced. There are many different groups that exist, with high, more of the higher risk individuals. To many points have been made, this is not everybody, this is a small population of people that are causing some challenges for us as a community, but those people are hurting. And one of the things I have been taught from clients and from family members is that we have to see situations from the eyes of people who actually have lived experience. They don't always choose to be this way, they've been, their life circumstance has not always been easy. They've been, their life circumstance has not always been easy. But their behavior is not okay. I'm not controlling their behavior. But it's not everybody. We've worked with a lot of people that are very appreciative. But I will tell you, I've been in this business for a long time. There has been a shift, there is a significant change. Our, I mean, we have more rates, we have more incidents at Morning Star than we've ever had. Last January, a year, a year this next month, we implemented security at Morning Star. We've never needed that before. We're having trouble recruiting staff at Morning Star because of some of the incidents that we're experiencing. But it's a select few. We work very closely with the OPP and Treaty III and MACWA, and all of our community partners to ensure that service does what it does in Morning Star Center. And we too are a warming and cooling center. But we have, we can't have been open up later in the day because we have to do a lot of cleaning. Like, we were full last night, I checked our numbers. I talked to, I talked to one of my mobile staff today, because we do go around town picking up needles and meeting people where they're at, and working with the Fellowship Center as well. And she said she saw about 18 people today that she didn't recognize, that are part of our population that we serve on a regular basis. So there's a lot of people coming to town that stay. There are a lot of challenges, but there's a real commitment by a large group of us to make some positive change. And I do believe that we need to work together with city council, with local business, and with organizations, and with our First Nations partners. And also through the voice of lived experience, we can never dismiss that, to come up with solutions. It's not going to be perfect, but we have to be going in the right direction. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Go ahead.
I'd like to say thank you to the Mayor and Council again for this opportunity, for all of us to gather and if this continues, I see it as a positive sign. My name is Meg Gilman-White. I'm the, you want my phone number, 613-261-8500. And I'm a community legal worker at Northwest Community Legal Clinic, also a member of Kenora Moving Forward. I don't want to say all of the stuff that people have already said, because they've said it eloquently. But for me, I'm here because I know that sometimes we tend to jump to blaming a particular group of people when something goes wrong. And what's happened in town has been just horrible for those store owners. I feel for the staff, I feel for the store owners, I feel for all of them. And I feel for the entire community. We do have a drug crisis here. We do have inadequate resources for people with addictions. We do have inadequate resources for people who are homeless. And we do have inadequate resources for people with mental health crisis. And I don't put any of those three things together necessarily. But as a community, somehow, we have to embrace a model that allows us to end homelessness. Medicine had us done it, it did it because its council made a very significant decision. We need to find that extra funding and be that declaring an emergency, as Mary Alice said around, I think you said mental health thing? Or, I can't remember, you said something?
Mental health, addictions, and housing.
Yeah, that. I think, maybe not altogether, but separately, I think it's very clear in this community, we have all of those issues. So I'm really hopeful that Mayor and Council can deliberate in a way that helps us as a community to pool those really significant resources, not hearing one voice more loudly than another, but coming together and actually talking this thing through. Because together, I believe, Kenora has the ability to move this thing in a good direction, in a good way. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mark McKeonan. My number is 226-938-1567. I'm new to Kenora. I've only been here for about 16 months. My wife got a job from Southern Ontario. We decided to pack up and come here because we had heard so many good things about Lake of the Woods and Kenora. And my wife, her office is supposed to be above the post office, and she's afraid to come into town. She has not stepped foot in that building unless she's in there with her boss. And they walk in together, and that's someone that goes to work during the day. Her office was broken into, they completely vandalized the place. Drugs, needles, condoms, blood, you name it. I know there's some tough questions to be asked, and it seems like there's been a lot of bandages put out there. But in Southern Ontario, if you see someone shooting up, you arrest them. If you see someone drinking on the street, you arrest them. I've not once seen an OPP officer empty a bottle of booze on the street. And I'm pretty sure everyone here knows that they're in the exact same spots every single day, and they're hammered first thing in the morning, or they're high. We know where these people are. I've heard that there's, the budget for the OPP is apparently one of the largest in Ontario. Where are they? Where are you guys? Why are you not out on the streets, walking around? If you stood on the corner, I forget where it is, it's close to the dental office, right on the corner, move them, arrest them, put them in jail, and then help them from there. But we have to get them off the street first. They're not going to come forward and ask for help. There are not very many people that would do it. I mean, if this gentleman can do it, then if we can get 15 of them, 20 of them, it's a step in the right direction. But we need to, I come from tough love, and we need tough love right now. We need to come together as a community and we need to get tough ones. I mean, we can't do little bandages and hand out needles and hand out, you know, food. All that, to me, is you're welcoming other people from other areas to come and do drugs and drink and, you know. Where are they getting their booze? All I hear is, we are not allowed to touch them. They know they're walking in to steal, and they walk right out with booze, or they walk right out from the dollar store, they walk right out from No Frills. That doesn't happen in the state, in Southern Ontario, because there's a presence. And I feel there's a huge lack of presence to get that ball moving. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi there, I'm Stephen McDonald. My number is 807-709-4526. I'm also new to Kenora. I'm from Toronto, born and raised. I have a completely different experience than the gentleman who just spoke. As being new to Kenora, I find the community that is on the downtown core very welcoming, very loving, very supportive of one another, if you see them in the right light. It is very hard to judge somebody when you're driving around and seeing the impacts of trauma and everything playing out, to see that on a two-second moment when you drive by. I've had, I've been fortunate enough to sit down around fires and meet these people, speak to them, sit in the background like I have today, and just observe. I came up here because my wife was recruited, she works at the hospital. She also loves this community, loves the patients she sees. And the patients she sees, excuse me, are the same ones you're seeing on the street here. So, it's going to take a commitment from everybody. From the business owners, there's a way to handle these situations that don't escalate. If you escalate the situations, you're going to see what we've seen playing out on the street. There's ways to buy in from everybody, and it's going to take everybody. Now, growing up in Southern Ontario, these problems are apparent every single day, being where we are. Unfortunately, maybe it's taken a little longer to catch up, to be here in 2022. I've been dealing with this my whole life. And there are solutions, we don't need to reinvent the wheel here. I'm glad what we're seeing here today, the buy-in from everybody listening, this is fantastic. We need to keep on moving on from here. We can't just go out and arrest people and throw them in jail and offer no solutions just to get them out of our sight because we don't like what we're seeing in front of us. Those aren't solutions at all. There's underlying issues that we have to solve in order to move forward, and it takes everybody. If businesses aren't meeting their key targets, their buy-in, it's because of situations that are playing out in society. If you want that target community, we all need to be there, we all need to buy into it. We are a hub for our surrounding communities. We have a responsibility to those surrounding communities. This is where they come to shop, this is where they come to live. We need to respect that, we need to embrace that. And I could go on and on and on, but take care and thank you everybody for showing up today.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Yes?
Sorry, my name's Scott Cook. My phone number is 204-999-1125. I own the Little Caesars. I'm just going to try and be brief, because I shut my store to come here. And the emergency meeting thing I thought was people maybe getting their business back. Sitting and having fires, great, all the best to you, my bud. 16, I was sleeping in a recycling box in Winnipeg. I was out on the street. I own the store, I've worked a truck 30 years. I've been with my wife 35 years, she's Métis. I love my family more than anything. And we're going to lose our business in town. We are assaulted on a daily basis, threatened, tried to be stabbed by a screwdriver, threatened to be killed every day. They come in belligerent and drunk, spit on the staff, steal from my store. So as people say, give me more funding and help them. They are trying to kill us daily, they are threatening us daily. They are drunk, they're pissing and shitting all over our store. We are fighting a losing battle. I don't know what to do anymore. I'm on an eight-year sentence that I'm trying to get out of hell. So as people try to pretend that, oh, well, I was there, I was there, my friend. I cleaned up, I did what I had to do. I worked 30 years on a truck to come here. My dad is born and raised in Kenora. My grandma's a retired schoolteacher in Kenora. I came back here, I've fished past tournaments and been here for 30-some years. Kenora is everything to me. I will do anything I can to help. I offered all of my expired food. Was told to go to hell and make fresh food, or take a hike. I've donated that same food that expired after 29 minutes, I put aside and put in a cooler. I've donated it to the homeless people in Steinbach for seven years. And have people come in all the time. We don't advertise it, we don't tell anyone, we do it because it's right. Here, they told me to take a hike, there, they give me Christmas cards, they come in in tears because I'm helping. I don't know what to do, my sewers are clogged with needles. I have hundreds of videos of them drinking out from my store. My staff don't want to come in, I'm closed on Sundays now, because I work open-to-close every day. Because nobody wants to come there, nobody wants to work there, and they're not safe. So they come into the store, they threaten to kill me. I phoned the OPP, I've never had anyone show up. Sergeant Barkley told me he was going to come. He came a month later to talk to me with a girl that was very offensive, telling me it is what it is. I know what I got into, forgive me. My dream was to live here, my family's from here, my wife's Métis. It's not a race thing, it's a survival thing. Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much. I gotta go with my store. Anybody else? Now's your, now's, or one of our first opportunities to speak, so.
My name is Tanya Cameron, 807-466-7267. I, I'm just representing myself, I'm a citizen of Kenora. One of the things that comes to my mind is how I understand we need our local businesses, and we need to support our local businesses. And I do. I did try to do most of my shopping here in Kenora. I personally am not scared to go shop around downtown, and for the most part, I am greeted by some of the store owners. Some of the store owners know my preferences and are quick to help me, others, not so much. I wish to remind people that in February 2021, one of the local First Nations was experiencing a major COVID outbreak. And immediately, there were, unfortunately, there were some businesses and organizations here in town that refused to serve people from that community. So a few things that told me is the racism that exists, the mind that some people have is we are not capable of self-isolating and knowing that if we're sick, we stay home. And that was for the whole community. And I was really, I still have that list of those First Nations businesses and organizations that people had reached out to me, I had 13 people reach out to me where they refused. And I would look at them like, how could you? Like, I go to your business, how could you treat people like that? And I am glad to say about eight or nine of them had apologized to those individuals. Eight or nine of them went out and said that they're retraining their staff. And so that's a good thing. But to know that that still exists today is terrible. And on Christmas Day, I was trying to tune out of social media, but people were messaging me and sending me screenshots of people in this community calling for the return of Starlight Tours. Someone that works, when I check through LinkedIn, works at one of the local, as a legal assistant in Kenora. And she was calling for a return to Starlight Tours. And if you don't know, and if you have the privilege of not knowing what that is, that means, well, in one instance, it could be the OPP, or it could just be individuals, pick up the vulnerable from downtown, snatch them, and take them out on the outskirts of town and make them walk home or leave the town. And that was usually done in the dead of night, in the cold of winter. And I was horrified to read that. And there was call for vigilante justice. And, and there's other people, like even just this morning, reading, this is why I never go downtown without unarmed. Like, that's the message that some of the people in the community, I'm not saying it's the business people, but people that are upright, standing citizens are putting that call out. So I'm here, I come because I'm worried about my brother or sister that are on the streets. Are they going to be hurt? Because we have some ignorant people that are saying that they should just, let's quit feeding them, okay, so let's quit housing them. So we, we have a segment, some people saying, let's just starve them out, let's just let them die on the streets without saying it, right? So I'm here because I want to make sure that I don't hear any bigoted or attacks from my people that happen, unfortunately, to be living on the streets. They have severe trauma in their lives, if you ever took the moment to talk to some of them. And it's easy to sit, and I know right now, there are people on this live feed that are probably saying a lot of terrible things right now, and sharing the worst of what people have to think about, whether it's First Nations people, whether it's people that are struggling with drugs, people that are struggling with alcohol that are stuck on the streets, because the services that we believe should be there for them just aren't there. We don't have enough focus from provincial or federal funding to talk about the treatment and the needs, the opioid use, the drug abuse that is so rampant that we have, you know, I even had non-Indigenous parents reaching out that they're so struggling, they're struggling. And my heart breaks for them. So it's not just a First Nations problem. And I just wanted to go on record, I know it hasn't been expressed by the city council, but I know there are a lot of people listening either in the room or online, they have to hear that if I see you publicly calling out for a call for hate, a call for vigilante justice, for a call to hurt the vulnerable, I'm going to call you out. Last year, I did that. I called two women out for the businesses, and I had the OPP calling me, asking you to delete that. I didn't say it, these women said it. So, that's what I'm here for. Thank you.
Thanks, Tanya. Thank you. Anybody else? Chad?
Um, I guess we say our cell phone number, I arrived here late, so sorry, I'm Chad. 466-2809. I was, been born and raised here for 40, four years now. Good and bad points, all put aside, everything needs to be fixed. Everything needs to be helped, put along, fixed. There's a lot of crap going on. I've been going through it for six years, I've lost staff, I've lost There's a lot of crap going on. I've been going through it for six years. I've lost staff. I've lost food trucks because of it. I'm maybe looking at downsizing again, which is losing staff again. But it's gotta be fixed and I've been, I was talking to someone, I forget who it was, about a year and a half ago. And they said, well, what can you do? So I began to help feed our four shelters in town at a greatly reduced cost. To the point where I'm breaking even every day, seven days a week. But I'm trying to do my best to help those who need the help. Yes, we can put the blame on OPP, CMHA, whoever else, Northwestern Health Unit, but we should all look at chipping in to help out. As a business owner for twenty-six years now, I'm willing to help out more and more to see everybody succeed in town. Not just the people in the homes, the businesses, but everybody needs to succeed. Because without all of us succeeding, we won't be very far in life. I would like to ask anybody else who can help out to help out. If it's lending hand, helping us feed them, helping us talk to them, by all means, just help out. It needs to be fixed and we should all do our part to help out just a little bit more. I'm not pro it. I'm not against it, but I wanna see our town changed. And it's gotta be changed for the better to move on. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Hi, I'm Jay Barnard, six one three, oh, do you know me, Mayor? Six one three four zero seven seven three zero six. I think a lot of people in here probably know me. Um, I don't think it's a secret. I've been in recovery for fifteen years. Uh, it'll be February eleventh, twenty twenty-three, so, um, you know, even in two thousand eight, when I tried to get help in Kenora, there was no help. I had to virtually go to Ottawa. Uh, thank God for a counselor behind the hospital that saw something in me before I saw something in me. Thank God to Judge Frazier that saw something in me before I saw something in me, uh, that got me the help that I needed, right? So if I look at what's going on today, I have my own program. It's called Hype, Hype Recovery Coaching, Help Your Personal Affair. I was a business owner in town. I lost my business. I think everybody knows I own Freshwater Quizzie. I lost millions of dollars through COVID, uh, and had to close that business. That was my life. I, 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 I still have the property and all that stuff, but I closed it. And, and for me, that could have been an opportunity to go do something really bad. Or that could have been an opportunity for me to do the PPT, which is the Position Pivot and Timing. And I knew that mental health was a massive issue. It's not just here. It's everywhere. I work with people all across the world. It just, we see it more here because we're here. Now, the, the issue really is, it's not the drugs and the alcohol. It's the trauma. And it's the people not getting the help that they need. And the program that I've presented to the Kenora Jail, the program that I presented to Greg Rickford, the program that I presented to Eric Molelo, the program that I was gonna present to the mayor because I'm setting up a meeting with you, the program that I presented, we need programming in town. We do. And we need it from a lived experience side of things. And from a lived experience side of things, I'm able to get to the level that they're at. I know what it's like having a needle hang out of my arm because I was there. I know what it's like committing suicide because I was there. I know what it's like doing these things because I was there. Maybe somebody that wasn't there truly doesn't understand what that's like, right? And, and, and the truth of the matter is, is we're losing people at a rapid pace, at a rapid rap. I have a seven-year-old daughter. She yells recovery rocks. She knows all about daddy's issues. She knows all about daddy's depression. She knows all about daddy's anxiety. It doesn't have to be in the closet anymore. Why are we keeping things in the closet? Why, why, why aren't we open, openly talking about it? Why aren't we open about having peer-to-peer, uh, mentor recovery coaches help people? Why isn't there funding being opened up to somebody like me that's devoted almost a quarter of my life to helping people? After being an addict and an alcoholic on the streets. I used to fill this town with cocaine. Jeff will tell you. I used to fill this place with cocaine. What we need to do is we need to come together and we need to work together and be open. Just because a guy like me doesn't have the traditional schooling or the traditional education, I do have the schooling. It's called lived experience. Twenty years of hardcore using and killing myself and fifteen years of living a life beyond recovery and helping thousands of people across the world, not just Kenora. From a mental health advocate to a celebrity chef, to all the things that I've accomplished. I found myself back in Kenora, opened the boathouse in two thousand fifteen to help our city. It's nobody's fault that the city is getting hostage from people. We're allowing it to happen because there's no program. Go to the jail. Where's the program? We have a beautiful peace because there's no staff. Where's the program? Programming should start in the jail. People ask me every day for help at the jail. Jay, I want help. I used to struggle with alcohol and drugs. I'm a celebrity in the jail. They watch me and Ashley, the recovery couple, on the TVs. We have to be open to new things. We have to be open to new verbiage, new narrative. We have to be open to allowing people to help and find funding for people like myself to do the help. I know change can come because I see it in myself and I see it in thousands of people. I have all kinds of testimonials of people getting help through the programs that we created. And we've partnered up with other treatment centers and sober houses. But for whatever reason, the government doesn't see it yet. And that has to change. Because people at fourteen and thirteen years old getting addicted to meth and losing their lives is very, very sad. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, my name's Alana Vautwell, uh, four zero seven nine one three one. Um, I work at the Community Space, one of the things that Kenora Move Forward does. Um, and I was actually just commenting to someone yesterday how much progress I've seen on an individual basis for those who have mental health and addictions. I've seen a ton of really positive, like upward trends and not just like one or two, but like generally looking from last winter to this winter. I've actually seen a lot of individual progress and lots of people are clean. They're like, maybe still on the street, but like a lot of really good steps. So I just wanna like put that little bit of optimism out there that there is hope and I, and I really see a lot of good things like contributing to that from the Ram Ben and the mobile health crisis, really like access, going out in the street and building relationship with people. Because individuals really have a mistrust of institutions, um, and it's really hard to access a lot of the services. So there are things out there, but the two things for me that I keep thinking about in solutions is one, the accessibility and really like building that trust with individuals. It's not just institutionalized. Um, and then the relationship piece. Because I think relationship is really important and understanding where people are coming from and getting to know people. Um, and so I don't quite know what that looks like, but any way that we can help build, rather than divide, there's this really like divisive trend. But if we can bring people together and help people work together, if it's a, you know, foot brigade, have individuals from the street alongside people from mainstream so that you're building those relationships as you go. And then building relationships is a part of that. Um, yeah, that's the kind of solution focused that just relationship and making things accessible. Um, and like de-institutionalized, I guess. Thanks.
Thank you.
Can I add one?
Yeah, is there, can I just, I just wanna make sure that we like, uh, capture everybody and then I'll allow you to speak again. Is there anybody else who would like to speak? Um, okay. Um, do you need, do you need five minutes again?
Not even, no, I just. I, I also wanna remind us all that we are in a difficult, everybody is in a difficult period. We are in an economic recession that we have not experienced in at least a couple of decades, maybe three or four now. Um, I, I was traveling this fall overseas. This is happening everywhere. This is a worldwide experience. People are moving in large numbers all over the world. There are large homeless populations everywhere. I have not been to a city or town that is not experiencing this. So it's not a, that's, you know, people are thinking this is a Kenora thing and if we just cleaned up our town, it would all be better. It's not a Kenora thing. And we're also in a post-pandemic, really trying time. I, it's been so hard for everybody. And the relation, you know, relationships and being able to see each other and talk to each other and that has affected everyone. So I just wanna remind people that we're part of something that's happening everywhere. And, and to think of it that way and come up with things, um, that maybe are gonna help other communities. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Boden, meant to say this before. But it's about us. Not them. It's about us. Some of us, a few of us, have some very serious problems that involve mental health and addictions or both. Some of us don't have anywhere to live. Some of us have pulled ourselves up by whatever bootstraps and are trying to do better in our own lives. Some of us have been really fortunate to be able to help other people, whether it's operating in business, providing food, just being with people. And a lot of us need to think about how we can help too. At least supporting the people that are willing to step out and do something. But it's about us. It's not about them. I have a nice button that somebody gave me that has us and them and a stroke through it and I can't find it, but I put it on my coat.
Thank you. Um, any, anybody else like to, uh, speak? Okay, uh, just, do you have your hand up?
Just to get, amen, and this is on an awesome forum. This has not been done in years to let people speak, so congratulations.
I think nine, two thousand nineteen was the last one I can remember and it was over at the, before that.
But in years.
Oh, a year.
In, in council chambers gives people an opportunity. Thank you for your time. I mean, that's, that's a really good idea.
And, and Andy, it's, it's the start. And I, and I use the word journey, uh, and, uh, you know, I tag on what Mary just said about, we all have to come together to, uh, come up with, uh, solutions. And there are solutions. Are they going to be easy? Absolutely not. I don't think anybody realizes that, but, uh, uh, it's a start and we need to start looking at some, you know, short-term, medium-term and long-term, uh, solutions. Uh, but we have to start somewhere. And so hopefully this is the start today of, um, better things to come. And it's not about marginalizing people. It's about doing the right thing for the community. We're all citizens here. Um, we're all affected in certain ways. Um, and, you know, like it was said before, and I think it was Tanya about the comments. Uh, I was equally shocked at those, uh, just as much as when I saw a video on the night of the twenty-second or twenty-third. I know some of those people and I was, I just, I just cannot believe, um, uh, some of their solutions and that they're not ones that I support. Um, and I'm, I'm not gonna speak for, the rest of council can speak for themselves. Uh, but that's not something that's gonna be in our real house of solutions. I can assure you that I will have nothing to do with supporting those types of ridiculous programs and ideas. So just so you understand that.
Got people speaking out here, which is really important.
Yes, yes. Um, now there was a hand, oh, yes. Do you wanna?
Yeah, sure. Uh, Johnny Gregg, uh, four six four thirteen seventy-seven. So I'm a physician. I'm actually just, uh, keeping my patients waiting right now because I thought that this was such a great opportunity, seeing it online. I think, uh, it's wonderful to hear uh, all the comments across the board. And this is a massive issue. I just moved into town about six months ago. And I am worried about bringing my kids in, no doubt. And I am a physician who works with the people. So I recognize that the, I, I feel like I'm walking both lines here of wanting to help the situation improve and help the lives of the people that we see downtown. But also knowing that I have my, you know, five-year-old and three-year-old and am I comfortable bringing them downtown? So it's, it's a pretty challenging thing. Um, but from a health perspective and knowing that health and wellbeing, it's so much about the community that you live in. The people downtown have awful health status. HIV and AIDS is rampant now, right now in Kenora. And I don't know if we're aware of that, but we've had fifteen cases in the last nine months when there had not been a single new diagnosis in eight years. This is all about shared drug use. Uh, and so we know that needle exchange and appropriate harm reduction, um, education is the way that we can prevent that deadly condition, which is gonna cost us or the government at least twelve thousand dollars a year per patient if somebody is even compliant on their meds without a case management. So this is a very expensive issue. And ODOs. So we have this mixed cocktail of deadly drugs. Fentanyl, benzodiazepines that are not coming from Kenora are being cut elsewhere probably that are killing these people. And it's not just an indigenous thing. This is not just people on the streets. This is people who use drugs everywhere across Canada and Kenora is so badly affected by it. So people are losing their lives, their health status is decreasing and they're feeling more and more this, this burden of stigma against them, which comes with some of the issues that have been identified as to just arrest them, throw them in prison, uh, let them back into the hospital, all of those kind of ideas, which I can understand from an anger perspective why people would say that, especially if you're worried about your own safety and the safety of your kids. But I think we can come to an agreement at this point that's not going to solve this problem, which is affecting every small community in Canada, especially in the Northwest. So, uh, I hear a lot about what are we gonna do to come together? How do we work off this safety and wellbeing plan? We need to, no doubt. Uh, there's been lots of discussions over the years, but clearly it's time to do this again. I would highlight safer supply of opiates as a top priority to talk about as a community. Police are a massive part of that. The supervised consumption site, which I know, uh, I expect the report from the health unit is gonna come soon. So that's where folks can go to use drugs safely and hopefully without prejudice or harassment from the police for having that drug on their person. That needs to happen here, no doubt. And as a collective body of health and social services, we are duplicating services. There's a massive duplication of services. And this is not necessarily that we're under resourced because I think that Kenora probably has what it needs to tackle this problem for the most part in health and social, but we have got to come together. The All Nations is a great platform to do that. I don't know if we're really utilizing that as well as it should be done. Uh, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Anybody, uh, one last time, anybody else? Um, okay, uh, so just to sort of lay out what we're gonna do for, uh, probably a good part of the afternoon now. Um, at some point in time, when the, when the, uh, when the room is cleared, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna go in camera. There's a couple of items that we have to, uh, address in there as it relates to what everybody's talking about. Uh, but it has to be done in camera. We're not hiding anything. That's just the, the mechanism that we have to use uh, in our governance model because it's what we're talking about. Um, so I just wanna assure people not going behind closed doors to, uh, either do nothing or to talk about the people that, uh, spoke today. Uh, we're taking all that information in, uh, but we're, we're doing our part also. Um, because we're part of the, we're part of the solution. The seven people around here in administration. So we're gonna go ahead and do that. We are gonna come out at some point, uh, in the public session again and, um, and that will be an opportunity for counselors to speak in public. Um, and we'll be talking about a couple other, uh, ideas or initiatives that aren't required to be discussed in camera. Um, when that will be, I have no idea. Um, we scheduled till one o'clock today and that, but I know we're gonna go well past that. So, um, that's kind of our journey for the rest of the day. Um, uh, but we will be coming out of, uh, uh, in camera and it'll be livestreamed at that point. It'll, it'll, it'll start up again. Uh, so, um, you can continue to watch that and it'll be interesting to see what, uh, other members of, uh, the chamber here have to say as we move forward throughout the day. So I wanna thank everybody for coming. I know it was short notice. I know it's the holidays still. But we all felt compelled to do this today and not wait till next week or the week after. Um, let's start this discussion now. Let's start working on the solutions. Um, and move forward and let's see where it takes us. Um, I don't know what it's gonna look like in a couple of months or six months. Uh, but I know if we all work together, and I think Andy had mentioned that and a few other people, uh, if we work together and look for solutions. The solutions, the solutions are out there. We just have to find them. We just have to find them and see who's going to be tasked and work together with those who want to make change in this community. So that's what we're looking to start today. So thank you very much for attending. And we'll, if you want to talk a bit, I guess we'll have a little break. If you want to talk to some councillors, whatever, and then we're going to go into in-camera.
Can you call for the motion first?
Yeah, I will. So item number two, motion to adjourn to a closed session.
Is there anyone else who wants to slide this down?
So resolution number one, moved by myself and it's seconded by Consulor Koch, that this meeting be now adjourned to a closed session at 12:10 PM. And further, that pursuant to section 239 of the Missup Act 2001 is amended. Authorization is hereby given to committee to move into a closed session to discuss items pertaining to the following. Personal matter about identifiable individual. One matter, downtown safety concerns.
Thank you. Call the question. All in favor? Carrie, thank you.
Okay.
Good to go.
Yep.
Okay?
Yes.
Okay, so, welcome back. We're in, uh, back in public session again. We're in the open session. Uh, and we have, uh, three action, action items that, uh, Councilor Madison is going to provide public notice on.
Okay. Hiring of the Community Safety and Well-Being Coordinator. Number two, move forward with redevelopment of Community Safety and Well-Being Plan. And number three, receive commitment for increased foot and car patrol in the downtown of the OPP. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, I'll call the vote then.
Uh, it's just directions.
Okay. So, what I thought now is, uh, if we wanted to go around, uh, if, um, any of the councilors that wanted to speak, uh, about today's meeting, and if they had any other final comments to make before we adjourn. And I'll start with, I'll start with Councilor Chaser.
Sure. Thank you, worship. Um, just a couple of quick comments and observations. First, I really appreciate the level of engagement we had from the public that came down today on such short notice. Not only to, to explain and share, uh, their, their stories and their experiences, but also to listen to those of, of others, um, and others' perspectives. The, the problems that we have in our community with regard to our downtown safety, um, are very serious and are not, and are not going to be solved overnight, but we're, we're committed. I'm committed as a counselor, and I know my colleagues around the table here are as well, to, to really addressing these issues and be proactive and, uh, and step up to deal with this. The, uh, the comments I made, uh, the other week there, two weeks ago about, um, stopping the blame game, um, I, I think that, that has started. We're, we're, it's time to take action. It's time to engage. And, um, going forward, I think we're, you know, we're going to be able to make a bit of an impact here. So, please be patient with us. Please continue to take care of each other. Uh, we are a community, and, uh, let's not forget that. We have to take care of each other. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll go around.
Thank you. I would echo, um, it is encouraging to see so much community involvement, um, in, in anything that we do at this level. These level meetings are always open, so everyone is always welcome to, um, participate at, in this. And I think that it is important to have everyone engaged because we are, at the end of the day, only seven individuals at this table. We have our lived experiences. We are not the be all and the end all in anything. And so, having community engagement and community, um, support is, is imperative. So, uh, with that being said, we all know that the systemic problems, um, that are at the crux of, of these challenges that we are facing are beyond the purview of this council alone. But we as council can advocate, whether it's to our provincial partners, our federal partners, our community partners, and various stakeholders, um, to make sure that we are adequately and effectively caring for everyone in our society. And that some of the ramifications of these systemic inequities that we are seeing in our city are the violence, um, being experienced by many members of our community. I want to hold space for the fear that people have and find ways to support and uplift our community. With that being said, I have three short-term and three long-term solutions that this council can consider. For short-term items, the first one would be increased lighting, um, at, in streets and alleyways and introducting routes in our downtown core. We can look to, uh, increase access to Community Improvement Plan funding to help businesses create, uh, crime prevention through environmental design infrastructure improvements. And my third one, we sort of already did, is encouraging, increased foot patrol. Some long-term goals that we can look to address at this council, as I said, is advocating to our provincial and federal government partners for targeted approaches to addressing poverty, mental health, and substitute use disorder. These can be gained through programs such as basic income, reported targeting housing development, greater access to preventative healthcare, and holistic treatment, healthcare options, stronger tax regulations for corporations and high-income earners, for stronger competition laws to reduce price fixing and price gouging, and fully funded child welfare. We can also look at taking the lead of cities such as Houston and declaring a housing first strategy to target chronic homelessness in our community by the end of this term through our partnership with our community partners. And the last option for this consideration is creating strong, trusting relationships with our community partners so that the wealth of their resources, talented abilities that I believe we have in this community can be utilized in a targeted, thoughtful way to create a sustainable community for everyone who chooses to live out here. Violence is not the answer. We will not police our way out of this. It is easy to criticize and point blame. It is difficult to create consensus and compromise to create salientless solutions to protect everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Uh, Councilor, I'm going.
Um, I guess I would just like to say, I, to everyone recently who has personally experienced some bad situations or violence downtown, I'm sorry for you. That shouldn't happen. You should never feel unsafe in your own community. And, um, that doesn't matter whether you're, uh, you live downtown, or you're a business person, or you're, you're underhoused or unhoused. You should feel safe. And so, I do, uh, want to say that I'm sorry that this has brought us to today, but I'm glad it did in a way because this is our, we've had one council meeting, and, um, so we're still getting to know one another as a group. And I can assure you all, uh, the 1,200 people that were online, as well as the full gallery that we had here today, that this group of people is a good group of people. You've put the right people in place. They're compassionate. They're, they're caring. They're community-minded, and they're, uh, keen to get to work. So, that's a good combination for helping to solve this. And, um, you've done well, and we hope to do well by you. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Uh, Councilor Madison?
First of all, my heart goes out to all the people affected by the violence, by drug use, and by mental illness. A coordinated effort is required by many factors within the city to ensure all of our safety and well-being. As council, we will champion and advocate for any viable solutions that help all of our residents. This is just one step towards a healthy and viable can run. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilor Clutch?
Thanks. Um, I think I just echo a lot of what my fellow councilors have said. I, I really want to reiterate that hatred and violence is not the way out of this. Shipping people away is not the way out of this. I'm, I'm feeling like our community is ready at individual levels, at business levels, to really all contribute to whatever the solution looks like. And I'm excited by that. And I just want to say to the small business owners in the downtown who are living in fear and, and considering shutting their doors, please don't. Please stay here because we value you, our whole community values you. And, and you're vital to the success of anything we try to do here. And we welcome your input when we get to a point that we can start making some steps forward together.
Councilor, ready?
Yeah, I just, uh, it was a good conversation today. I'm glad that we're committed to moving forward with a Community Safety and Well-Being Coordinator. Uh, redeveloping our Community Safety and Well-Being Plan because really this is the blueprint for moving forward. And, uh, trusting the process. We'll have, uh, community consultations as part of this, which we've had in the past. We'll be able to have more of these. And, uh, really get, um, points of view from various stakeholders, various individuals, but again, come to a consensus and decide on priority. Uh, redeveloping our Community Safety and Well-Being Plan because really this is the blueprint for moving forward. And, uh, trusting the process. We'll have, uh, community consultations as part of this, which we've had in the past. We'll maybe have more than once. And, uh, really get, um, points of view from various stakeholders, various individuals, but again, come to a consensus and decide on priority areas to move forward and make our community better. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Brin. Uh, just a couple of, uh, closing comments. Um, first of all, I'd like to thank all of council and, and staff that put this meeting together. Uh, didn't give you a whole lot of time. We gave you the 24 hours. That was it. Um, so there was a lot of background work that went on. Uh, and thanks for everybody's opinion and dialogue today. I think it was very fruitful. Um, I think we can begin to see, uh, you know, part of a plan that, or a part of an overall plan that we're looking to achieve. Uh, and again, I think I'll, I'll echo, yeah, this takes time. This is not going to happen overnight. Um, the issues didn't happen overnight, and the solutions will not happen overnight. Um, and thank you to, I, I see there's, uh, three individuals back in the, in the, in the chamber again. Uh, so welcome back. And to all the people that attended today, uh, you know, again, time of the year, holidays, Christmas holidays, uh, people took time out to come here and voice their opinion. Uh, all, all, all opinions were, uh, weighted equally. They've all been recorded. Um, we're going to take all this information back with the information we've discussed today and, uh, continue to move forward in a positive way for the community.